I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 30th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kokowski.
Morning, everybody. This is Sadie. Sadie's used to being on camera. We had a video at the dog kennel yesterday trying to promote our adoption, so we're calling her Sadie the superstar because she is, uh, she's gonna be on TV a lot. Uh, I think she's a boxer mix. She's not quite a year old, but she's very loving. Uh, I think she'd be a very loyal dog for someone. And she's also good with other animals. We had a little Pomeranian jumping all over her yesterday, and they really got along well. So, she'd make somebody a very good dog, a very good companion, and I urge you to come down and check out our, our other dogs if this is not the type of dog you want, and visit our website also. Thank you.
I think that we wanna give Sadie to John Roca Cee as a retirement friend. it delivered.
All right. UPS.
No, no, personal delivery. I think the three commissioners will bring it over. A thought for the day is attributed to our county administrator. He probably doesn't remember having said it. It was on leadership's calendar for June 28th. It says, "The best thing to do to someone who hurts you is to live well." It was pretty good, Jim. I like that. So, at this time, I have a proclamation from the commissioners for Mr. Roca Cee. It's in the matter of expressing our best wishes, I can't spit it out, John, to John Roca Cee on his retirement from the Lorraine County Commissioners' office, whereas John Roca Cee began his employment for Lorraine County as Budget Director on October 10th, 1989, and whereas we are recognizing John for more than 15 years of service with the county, and whereas his good fellowship and congenial sense of humor with working associates has been enjoyable, whereas John will have time to visit the museum to see the world's largest spa of twine, and enjoy many hours of C-SPAN, and I'm gonna add here, and walk Sadie. Now therefore, be resolved that the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners expresses appreciation to John Roca Cee for services rendered to the county and its citizens. Further, the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and staff wish for John and his wife Kathy a very healthy, peaceful retirement as he pursues his hobbies and interests in cooking, tinkering in the barn with his tractor, train watching, and traveling to New York to see Molly, and California to see Matt for many years to come. And we've all signed it, and we're gonna miss John.
Good morning and thank you, commissioners. And Jim, I'll be brief this morning. First, I'd like to thank this board and administrator for the opportunity to have served as the county budget director. My gratitude extends to past administrations as well. Sincere thanks to my staff Shelley Marraro, Marla Janus, and David O'Connor. They've worked hard and they're an asset to our county. And good luck to Shelley in her new position. She's a little nervous this morning, too. The person I believe that has most energized and supported my efforts over the years, however, has been my wife Kathy, the audience today, with the support of my two children, Matt and Molly. For those who don't remember the early 1990s, our county was going through some really horrendous times, and Commissioner Blair knows what I'm talking about.
I remember well.
She and I suffered through those bad years. The general fund was broke, there were layoffs, low morale, and ultimately, we got into court litigation. We were also wading through some serious issues dealing with the county health care plan. Again, we had distractions, litigations, and major headaches. In light of this, I was putting in some heavy overtime, six and seven days, six and seven day weeks on a fairly regular basis. My wife Kathy, on her own, would drag in the igloo cooler on Saturdays and Sundays regularly with a cooked meal, and then reheat it for me here in the office. We'd share dinner and conversation briefly, and then she'd assemble things and take it back home. So that was our weekends. Ladies and gentlemen, there isn't too much of that dedication left today, and I admire Kathy for that. And Kathy supported my efforts in many other ways during those troubled times. Speaking of the 1990s, I'd briefly like to recognize two people who had a very positive impact on me and on our county as well. The late Julian A. Pajer. Mr. Pajer was the county auditor through many years in the 1990s, prior to his retirement. Although I came to the county with a good financial background, Mr. Pajer taught me the ropes, what was really important at times and maybe what wasn't. Mr. Pajer was a teacher, a professional, and most of all, a good human being. Bob Flanagan, he's not here today. He stopped by yesterday, spoke to him for a while. Bob was a teacher, too. He taught me to be an effective witness. He taught me the legal ropes. Bob was and is today an Assistant Prosecuting Attorney here at the county, an excellent attorney and another asset to our county. And this takes nothing away from Jerry Ennis. I put that in there. We all, the greatest respect for Jerry, so I, my congratulations to Jerry and working with him over the years. Finally, now, I would encourage the board to be ever cautious and vigilant as the financial future of the county is charted. I think it's good at times for all of us to step back and reflect on the fact that budgets and budgeting are not just about numbers. They're not just about revenues, expenditures, and appropriations. A budget is a plan. It's a roadmap into our future. It's also good to recognize the fact that many fiscal decisions, when made and implemented, are irreversible, good or bad. So I do wish the best to all in our county. Thank you very much. For all your service, everybody.
Mr. Cordez, you must have something to say. You reached for the microphone.
I do, and I just want to congratulate our budget director, your budget director, my budget director, the county's budget director, upon his retirement. John and I have worked together off and on now for eleven and a half, almost 12 years. We're gonna retire the phrases that I'm gonna be brief. We're gonna retire the phrase, "This is complicated," but I'll make it simple. We're going to miss the crystal ball, which I...
I inherited it.
You inherited the crystal ball.
I inherited the crystal ball.
All right. Sometimes I thought it was one of those magic eight balls that we shook up, but, but most of all, John, I am personally going to miss your good, dry sense of humor, your camaraderie, your friendship, your guidance, and the time that we spent together just talking about different things in the workplace and life in general. I think it's, for me, it's been a good relationship. I would hope it has been for you, the military. I'm not sure I can tell those same stories with Shelley, so, but I wish you the very, I wish you the very, I wish you the very best going into your future. I hope you'll come back and visit us often, and that we stay in some kind of communication, and this is not the end, but just a different beginning.
Thanks, Jim.
Take care, John.
A lot was done here. It really did take, as Jim has said, a team effort, and that's true. So, a lot's been accomplished through the time, through the time we've seen this century. So, thanks.
And thank you again, John. And by the way, if you have large a sea in your garden, you know, you can bring it up here.
I can share.
Yes, we'll be happy to have you share with us.
We're only 20 minutes away.
Shirley Johnson.
Shirley R. Johnson. I just wanted to say that in the, I guess about seven or eight, maybe nine, I think it's only seven, years that I've been coming here, we've, that we've been coming here, we found Mr. Roca Cee to be very helpful, cooperative, and pleasant to work with, and being sure that we had the materials we ought to have to know, to try to know what's going on. You also left off your list of things he wants to do in his spare time, as I understand it. He likes to walk around Tappan Square in Oberlin, he and his wife particularly, in the evening, so I hope he has more time to spend walking around in Oberlin, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. And he could take the dog with him. Kathy, I'd like you, and I believe Matt and Molly are in the audience, to stand up and be recognized. You don't need to sit in the back. This is the family, yes. This is the family that we heard about you as you grew up. We know lots of stuff about you, good stuff. Shelley?
I just wanna take Shirley's comment about Tappan Square one step further. John always told us, when we were talking about what he was gonna do with his retirement, he says, "You know, I think I just might go to Oberlin, get a coffee, take my folding chair, and go to Tappan Square and read the newspaper," because I'll let you do that. So, John, starting tomorrow, here's your subscription to the newspaper. Here's your folding chair. I hope you're thinking about us at 9:00 tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Kathy and I just talked about this. How appropriate.
I think he's gonna have to get her own, though. They only got one.
They're reading about you guys in the paper.
No, you're not supposed to believe everything you read. Shirley?
They left out, they didn't give him a suitable outfit to, to go along with the Oberlin population that he could wear when he sits in the square. I won't, I won't suggest what it is.
Now, that's a teaser. Surely. Shirley, you just can't tease us like that and not finish the story. You have a picture or something? I think it's more than that. Well, maybe we better conclude that, that part of the program there. Again, thank you, John, for your many years of service to the citizens of Lorraine County. Oh, okay, now we'll get down to the other business, resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Number one, job and family bills.
Also moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Number nine, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within the jurisdiction of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. At the conclusion of today's board meeting, the commissioners may recess into executive session to discuss personnel and new hires.
Commissioners, we have a number of new hires that we, we took under consideration last week for job and family services that we have not completed. You requested some additional information, which I believe is available today. In addition, I want to discuss potential hiring for vacancy in our telecommunications department, IT department. We have a matter of, also a matter of personnel litigation I want to discuss at the conclusion of our regular board meeting. All issues are permitted under the sunshine, Laura.
Thank you.
Okay. Number 10, approve and enter into a one-year preventative elevator maintenance agreement with Schindler Elevator Corporation in Cleveland to be paid from account number 00101-2101-450101, which is the building and grounds contract services. This service will include the Justice Center, Courthouse, Emergency Operations Center, and Records Center. This agreement supersedes all previous agreements currently in effect, and the county has the option to renew and renegotiate the agreement after a one-year period.
Mr. Cordez, I note that the administration building is missing from this, and I assume there's a reason for that, and I also assume you want to speak to us about it.
Well, I do, and, I do, and we have the ability to expand this contract. This is a little bit bigger than, than it appears here, because we need to get these elevator contracts in place for these elevators, because we're on a month-to-month, and it's costing us more money than we want. This'll save us in the short term some money, but what we're working on is a comprehensive countywide contract, trying to bring in the cities of Alariah, Lorraine, the townships that have elevators that the commission has assisted with them to the community development department to get with CDBG monies, in order to try to lower everybody's overall cost in the global contract. These are things we've been talking about, the community lines, for some time, and we're trying to use the economic strengths of the county to, to bring some pressure on those costs. We're not having a lot of success with this elevator contract, but we're gonna continue to try. There's only two or three big vendors that do this, and, and while clearly, I don't want to say they're in cahoots with each other, their pricing is very, very similar all the time, and, so, rather than just give up because, because they don't want to deal with us, we're continuing to apply pressure to them, and we're gonna continue to do that, and as we bring more and more people in, I think we can, we can get a better advantage. I've talked to the Safety Service Director in Alariah, I've talked to the Safety Service Director in Lorraine. We're trying to get these contracts to coincide, so everybody's coming and coalescing at the same time to need a contract. The problem we have is that we have all these contracts dispersed over different months and different years, so we're gonna continue to try. It may take a year, year and a half, to get everybody close where we can have the really big hammer to come down and make a difference. So, right now, we need to do this, but it's an open-ended issue that we're negotiating, and we still are pursuing the goals of, of uniting contracts on a greater countywide, regional basis.
There is a $30,000 transfer that we've approved for this purpose. Are there any other questions? Also moved for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Number 11, approve payment to victims of domestic violence for Lorraine County Safe Harbor Incorporated, otherwise known as Genesis House, for the amount of $29,169 as collected by Lorraine County for a period of January 1st, 2005, through June 30th, 2005. Collection and payment are pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 2303-201 and 3113-34-311339.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Number 12, authorize release of retainage to Whitlock Group in Richmond, Virginia, in the amount of $34,053.84, plus interest for work performed at the Lorraine County Justice Center. All necessary paperwork has been completed and received.
Mr. Cordez?
Commissioners, this, this was the company that provided all the technology for the Justice Center and the courtrooms, and we have issued them a substantially complete, and upon doing that, they're allowed to request their retainage, and we're satisfied that they performed all their requirements and terms and conditions under their contract, and we would support releasing the retainage.
Questions? Also moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Number 13, approve Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes and waive the reading of the same for May 19th, June 2nd, 9th, 16th, 20th, and 23rd of 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
I would note that before Teresa went on vacation, she cleaned off her desk and cleaned up all these minutes. That's a good job.
Number 14, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for Lorraine County Justice Center, which is Phase 4A Commerce Court parking lot. Notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on July 5th and 12th, and bids to be opened at 2:00 PM on July 25th. A pre-bid meeting will be held on July 15th at 2:00 PM in the Commissioners' public hearing room.
Mr. Cordez?
Parking, 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 parking.
Did you stutter or something?
No, I'm so tired of parking. 4A is our parking lot to be completed on Second Street, where the old Bobo's building and the bank building was. We're still waiting on city council approval. I want to let the board know that. I sent a letter, a letter to the mayor. We've passed hurdles with, with the design review and, and the building department. The final step is council. The reason we don't have it is because council has not been in session. They're on their summer, their summer break. I don't anticipate a problem with council. I sent a, the letter to the mayor, letting him know we were going out for bids. I didn't want anybody to, to get their, their behinds in an uproar, because we were bidding before we had the final council approval. But I don't want to delay this project. I want to get out to bid. If, in fact, we don't get the final approval from council, which I highly, I find highly unlikely, we can always cancel the bids, but we need to get ahead of the power curve. I want to have those parking lots in place for you sometime in October, so I don't want to delay waiting a few more weeks. This is gonna be a nice project. You've seen pictures of it. The media wants to look at it after the meeting this afternoon. We'll, we'll put the pictures out. It's gonna provide for over an additional 100 spots. It'll be controlled parking. It's all part of the vacating of the alley and putting another side road on the alley. Again, I gotta thank, thank the Chronicle Telegram for doing that back here and giving us the idea to do that with our alley over there, which we had thought of it first. But it should alleviate all of the problems that we're having with parking, and I say all, because I think this'll be enough parking spots that, you know, we won't have the problems we've had in the last few years, even prior to the Justice Center. We still have problems with jury parking. We have to work them out over the next couple of years, because they're still gonna have to park down in Washington, and the board has been very generous, but we have not been able to reach agreements with various property owners, too, that we're a cost-effective way of dealing with that. The, the other issue is that we will once again have to go through this, and hopefully for the last time in Lorraine County, rearranging over 700 parking spots for the employees and assigned vehicles and so forth, and it wasn't a pleasure the last time, and it's gonna be even less pleasing this time. And then we'll, we'll recommend that, most likely recommend that we reopen the parking garage for mixed use with public and employee parking, and I'll be glad to make that recommendation, because, you know, we've, we've been subject to a lot of criticism for the way things were, but they had to be that way to get to this point, and I will be offering that plan to you hopefully sometime in September, so we can start getting it all ready to implement when we open the new lots in late October. Thank you.
Jim, do you anticipate we'll still have to have those rented spaces that we had during the construction of the Justice Center?
I don't know yet, Commissioner. It should give us a greatly diminished need for those rented spots. It depends on how much we have left. If we, if we give up all the rented spots and we just fill up that, then we're still gonna have, we're still gonna have, I think, less than what we need, but I'll be making some recommendations and, and meeting with you and sending some information on that. We're currently renting about, I want to say about 45, maybe 50 parking spots, if memory serves me correct. So, it'll, it'll all depend on how many spots we want to make available in this garage. I think some of the employees that have been here for a long period of time, and some of the public that's actually come here to our meetings, will remember how many times you've come into that parking deck and circled it, only to go out, because there was no parking in that deck, and, as, that's even more infuriating, because you spend all that time going around the deck, and you gotta drive all the time, you spend 10 minutes and you can't find a spot. So, so we have to develop, you know, some strategic use of this garage. We've, we never have done that very well either. I think that we probably need to put employee parking on certain levels, and then leave certain levels open to the public, rather than having it dispersed all over the garage like we do now. We, we have to put our thinking caps on and come up, and I would encourage anybody that wants to submit ideas, or if you have any ideas in there, please, let's talk, so that the public and, and the employees don't come in only to spend 10 or 15 minutes and, and then have to go out on the street, circle the block again, and try to find a spot out there to, to come to work. So, I know it's a long answer to a short question. I just don't know right now. It'll depend on how we mix up the parking.
Thank you. Also moved for approval of item 14.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Number 15, authorize payment of $1,000 to Dovin Funeral Home in Lorraine for services rendered in connection with veteran Andrew Bomback. This indigent payment is in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 590126.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, number 16, authorize Lorraine County Children and Families Council to submit a proposal requesting $20,000 for administration funds for the county's operational cost for fiscal year '06, effective July 1, 2005, through June 30th of 2006.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Number 17, amend resolution number 05475, adopted on June 9th, 2005, approving contracts for the fiscal year 2006 Help Me Grow Program. The revised contract awards are as follows. Number one, Catholic Charity Service Corporation, in the amount of $277,000, $277,125.67. Number two, Children's Development Center, in the amount of $37,908.89. Number three, Alariah City Department of Health, $365,384.91. Emmanuel Methodist Church, $35,370. Lorraine City Health Department, $334,833.47. Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities, $50,308.19. And the Neighborhood House Association of Lorraine County, for $185,470.60.
Also moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, number 18, accept an ODNR Coastal Management Assistance Grant titled Black River Watershed Action Plan, in the amount of $33,800, with a 50% local match, effective July 1 of 2005, through September 30, 2006. The local match will be provided from account number 00101-2502-450101, which is contract services, and we authorize county administrator to execute on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Number 19, award various change orders for assistance on behalf of Lorraine County Community Development Department. KMU Trucking and Excavating Incorporated and Avon, for additional emergency home repair assistance for Robert J. and Mary D. Boner, in the amount of $790.25, to install a four-inch storm line to front of ditch, and bedding installation per city of Avon requirements, to be paid from account number 12604-2501-450422. And the second is Boca Quality Builders Incorporated in Port Clinton, for additional rehab assistance for Marie Stewart, 1672 El Flada Street in Sheffield Township, in the amount of $287,060.60 for gutters, downspouts, and splash block fascia and vinyl bended soffit. This will be paid from account number 22404-2601-450201.
The amount is $287.60. Also moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Job and Family Services, number 20, approve and enter into an administrative service contract with Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Children, and in Lorraine County Children and Families Council for fiscal year two thousand six, administrative services in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars effective July first, two thousand five, through June thirtieth, two thousand six.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Number twenty-one approve and enter into various purchase of service contracts for Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services effective July first, two thousand five, through June thirtieth, two thousand six. Number one Lorraine County Office on Aging for fiscal year two thousand six for the Kinship Navigator Program in the amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. Number two Children and Families Council for fiscal year two thousand six, early start component of the Help Me Grow in amount not to exceed one million, fifty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. Number three Workforce Development Agency for fiscal year two thousand six, Workforce Investment Act programs and services in the amount not to exceed two million, nine-hundred-one thousand, three-hundred-and-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Number twenty-two approve and enter into various purchase of service agreements for Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services for the fiscal year two thousand six effective July one, two thousand five, through June thirtieth, two thousand six, and authorize the Director of Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form. Number one Buckholz Counseling Services Incorporated of Grange, Ohio for career counseling to the OWF recipients in the amount of eighty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and forty-four cents using the TANF funds. Number two Vocational Guidance Services, Leary, Ohio, for employment training, placement, and retention of OWF recipients in the amount of one-hundred-and-one thousand, twelve dollars using TANF funds. Common Ground Oberlin, Ohio for the First Step Personal Development Program in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and fifty-nine cents using TANF funds. Number four The North Center, Lorraine, Ohio, for homeless case managers to assist TANF families with housing issues in the amount of fifty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-three dollars and fifty cents using TANF funds. Number five Volunteer Guardianship Program of Lorraine County for Adult Guardianship Services in the amount of eleven thousand dollars using the Title XX Funds. Cambridge Home Health Services, Leary, Ohio, for Homemaker Home Health Services in the amount of twenty thousand dollars using Title XX Funds. Safe Harbor of Lorraine County for Protective Services for Adults in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars using Title XX Funds. And number eight Neighborhood House Association of Lorraine County for Protective Services for Adults in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five-hundred dollars using Title XX Funds.
Also move. Can you repeat that, please? Just kidding. A second.
I didn't get Lorraine Chimes after that.
My second.
Any discussion?
She was worried there for a minute.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Number twenty-three approve and enter into amendment number two between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Diversified Transportation Services, Toledo, Ohio. Said amendment will reflect an increase of six thousand dollars for the total contract value not to exceed one-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand five, excuse me. All other provisions under resolution zero-four, four-five-four on June seventeenth, two thousand four will remain in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Okay, under Transit, number twenty-four, authorize the filing of federal grant applications and agreements with the Federal Transit Administration and/or other federal agencies for the Lorraine County Transit. Authorize county administrator to execute all documents on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, number twenty-five, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Lorraine County Children's Services to utilize their Shell Oil gasoline and MasterCard not to exceed two-hundred dollars and twenty-five-hundred dollars respectively, respectively, for the year two thousand five. Employees will be listed in the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Domestic Relations, number twenty-six, approve the Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court funding of fifteen thousand dollars to be requested from the Invacare Foundation for the Family Education Court Program. The goals are to increase school attendance and improve academic achievement. No cash match is required for this grant.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Engineer, twenty-seven authorize Ohio Department of Transportation to review the Speed Zone Study prepared by the county engineer and declare a safe and reasonable speed limit for Columbia West River Road from one thousand feet south of Columbia High School and north to Folly Road in Columbia Township. This was performed due to the construction to align Columbia West River Road at the intersection of State Route eighty-two and heavier traffic.
So moved.
Second.
I'm not sure who said it. Mr. Kallo?
Kallo did it.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under Sanitary Engineer, number twenty-eight, approve and enter into an agreement with K.E. McCartney and Associates, Mansfield, Ohio, to subcontract and coordinate the geotechnical services for the soil boring of Rolling Heights, Broadway, Taylor, and Dutton Road sanitary sewer projects in the total amount of thirty-two thousand, nine-hundred dollars to be paid from account number zero-zero-one-zero-one, four-nine-zero-one, four-five-zero-one-two-four, which is under professional services.
So moved.
That's not what it says on my... Is that new? Was there a change?
I'm sorry, Commissioner. What was your question?
That's not what we have on our agenda, the amounts. And I think something, another sanitary project was added in.
There were two other projects she read into it. Besides Rolling Heights, she said Broadway, Taylor, and Dutton Road. And I thought the amount was the same. What was the amount that you read?
I actually... No, it's different.
I'm sorry.
I was actually given that information from Sandy Strzak right before the meeting.
Oh, what was the amount that you read?
Thirty-two thousand, nine-hundred dollars is the actual total.
Thank you.
For all three.
Okay.
Each one of them had a different cost here.
Oh, it's probably the two.
And I think that they just read the cover when they went to the first contracts over the board.
Oh, okay.
It was a, just an oversight. But there's three different proposals. These are three different sewer projects that we've been working on for about two years. The Broadway, Taylor is a must-do. We're under EPA orders and guidance out there because of unsanitary conditions into drainage ditches. And the Dutton Road and Rolling Heights sewers are by petition. We've had a majority of the homeowners in those areas that are petitioning for sewers, and we're working through those. Hopefully, we'll be bringing the sewer projects to the Commissioners this summer. And you will have your first experience at doing hearings.
Assessment?
Yes, assessment hearings. They're always a lot of fun. You know, seventy percent of the residents over there want sewers, but those seventy percent will stay home, and the thirty percent that don't want them will show up to talk to you. So it's always an exciting time. But it's a necessary project. You know, we purchased that property over there to get the easements, and we're concluding discussions... We have concluded discussions with Northwalk Southern to get a right-of-way under the train tracks. That was quite an underdoing there. So I think we're progressing nicely. And we need to do these sampling so we can get a better estimate of what kind of terrain and issues that we may be facing once we start digging in that area so we can figure out more completely our engineering cost.
A second.
And it's for the three projects listed at thirty-two thousand, nine-hundred dollars.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, is there any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under MRDD, number twenty-nine, support the Mental Retardation and Development Disabilities Board action determining a real and present emergency, an actual physical disaster to the school building. There is a condition and presence of mold that needs to be corrected before services can be provided to the students. MRDD will utilize procedures other than the competitive bidding process as an RFP in order to get the services.
And Mr. Ennis, I assume you would like to address this issue for the Board?
Commissioner, this office had an opportunity to review this with the MRDD Board. And based upon the information provided from their consultants and people working on that project, obviously, this is a condition that would create a very significant health risk to the students. Unfortunately, it's been discovered in a time that does not give us sufficient time to go through a complete formal bidding process. Obviously, we have to have the school opened in time when the students come in the fall. It is my understanding that the process they are going to use is going to duplicate the bidding process as much as possible. It's going to be a competitive thing. It's just that we can't comply with the formal time spans that a complete bidding process is going to require. So that's really the only thing that's going to be cut from the process is reducing the timeframes.
Thank you, Jennifer. Other questions? Also move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
It is now ten fifteen, and we're going to begin the public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand six tax budget.
Thank you, Janice. The Budget Department has prepared a document that has been submitted to the Board of Commissioners.
Good morning again.
Is this a curtain call, John?
Pardon me?
Curtain call?
Yes, I guess so, yeah. I guess it could be considered that. Very briefly, this is not... What you're seeing is not the annual appropriation. It's a tax budget, which is an estimate of what people think they're going to need in this county in various funds. This was in the Morning Journal here on June nineteenth, which lists all the different funds. What I can say very, very briefly is there are a hundred and five special revenue funds and functions of this county outside the general fund. The total of the general fund that's been submitted is just under sixty-five million dollars with thirty-six departments. And the hundred and five special revenue funds total one-hundred-and-eighty-one million dollars. So the cost of government to provide the functions in Lorraine County are approximately two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars, or about a quarter of a billion dollars. And as I would say in the past, it's not to blame your government... I think I've mentioned this in the past. This is the cost of providing services in a society. It's a reflection of what society is, good or bad. And where we are right now, again, is at a quarter billion dollars. And it is not... I'm kind of repeating here, but it is not the final budget for the year. That'll be done by the Board, Mr. Cordez and Shelley, in the fall and will be passed for January first. So with that brief explanation or overview, Shelley and I will entertain any questions you have.
This is the packet that the Commissioners were given. That was a nice brief overview. This is what we were given.
Yes, the detail also of the...
And the items that you presented were based on actual expenditures and receipts for two thousand three and four, plus actual for the first six months of two thousand and five, and estimated for the balance of two thousand and five.
That's correct, Commissioner.
And then your two thousand six estimate. So thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, and I thank my staff also very much.
Cooperative effort.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Are there any questions? If not, I'll move for approval as presented by the Budget Department.
Second. Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Cordez, County Administrator?
Thank you. Just for reiteration for the public's consumption, that is the tax budget. That is not the final annual appropriation that the Commissioners will do at the end of the year. Sometimes people get alarmed at those numbers. We're required to do that by Ohio Revised Code. The real roll-up-the-sleeves arm wrestling goes on in October and November into December for next year. I know you just can't wait to get into that mix. Commissioners, I have a letter here from Mr. Twining. He has been a member of the Natural Resource Assistance Council, and his term is getting ready to expire. He had asked that we place this on our agenda for July seventh. I know he's very busy, so he must have forgotten we're not meeting on July seventh. So I have it here. And he's asking to be reappointed. And I'll read, "I am currently the Vice Chair of our three-county Board. My term expires. I would like to be reappointed." The appointment and support letter has been made by the Board. Needs to be made by the Board of Commissioners. Ron's done a wonderful job for us on there. And I would ask that you would entertain reappointing him to that Board. And Ron, maybe you can tell us a little bit about what that Board does.
I'd be happy to, but Commissioner Blair served for quite some time as Chairman of that board, so she can fill in where I've forgotten to. But several years ago, I think it's been probably three or four years ago, four years ago, the statewide Clean Ohio Fund was enacted. It dealt with brownfields, stream restoration, park improvements. It goes under the portion we're dealing with, deals with park and recreation, water-type improvement, watershed improvements, and we refer to it as the INRAC, and I think it's in District Nine of the Ohio Public Works Commission. And it's made up of representatives from Medina County, Lorraine County, and Huron County. We've given out a lot of money through the statewide bond issue under Parks and Recreation and other activities, and it's a project that I really appreciate the opportunity to work on, and I respectfully ask that I continue in that responsibility.
Thanks, Ron. I'd just like to put in a plug for Joyce Parks.
Interesting.
A plug for her. Since I served as the Chair for a number of years, Joyce got the job of doing the paperwork. And Steve Hambley, Medina County Commissioner, is presently serving as the Chair, and he said he would accept the chairmanship only if he got Joyce along with the project. So she's been very, very helpful in coordinating the monies that have been distributed to three-county area. And as Ron said, it's patterned after the issue two, and it's worked very, very well. And we have some significant projects in our area, and it's a very exciting board to be on. I believe that Janice has the resolution.
Yes, she has.
You want me to read this off? Okay. In the matter of reappointing Ronald F. Twining to the Natural Resource Assistance Council, representing county government.
Also move for approval. I think there's a time, a period.
Okay, the set appointment is for three years, effective September twenty-second, two thousand and five, and ending September twenty-first of two thousand and eight.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Claire?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ron, I got a call this morning that, what a wonderful job you did at the Quarry's presentation last night to school, and it went something like, "Any man that can stand in a hundred and five-degree room with a sports coat on and appear not to be sweating and explain such a complicated process deserves more credit than he's getting." So I understand it went well last night, but it was extremely hot there at the school. But you're doing the public forums out there and moving that project along.
Thank you. And will you admit that was my wife that called?
Oh, we have such humor here.
Well, we definitely got to keep the meetings light. My last piece of business, and it's just a piece of information, Commissioners, this morning I signed on behalf of the county to enroll us into a Safety Council, our local Safety Council for our workers' comp. We have the opportunity to save some money here. As you know, for various reasons, the state continues to squander our workers' comp money on rare coins and golf outings and dubious investments at best. And we weren't able to get any kind of rebate this year, first time in a long time, that public and private investors in workers' comp, because we are all investors in workers' comp and we pay our premiums, have not been able to gain the advantages of a lower rate based upon the investments of our surpluses. And I say "ours," everybody that's invested in this pool. It belongs to us. It doesn't belong to the state, and it doesn't belong to the people that are dealing with the funds down there. So we have an opportunity to save four percent this year by joining the Safety Council. For us, that means about eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars, because our workers' comp costs this year are going to easily eclipse two million. John, I think we think they're going to get about two-point-three, two-point-two million this year, right? So we're looking under the barrel, on the long side of the barrel, any place we can for some dollars to save. The reason I'm bringing this up is, and I'll make this available, this is for public and private employers. Mr. Caleb?
Thank you.
All right? To save four percent. I don't know what four percent means, but to me, it means quite a bit. If I was able to get four percent on everything, I'd be very happy. So we're going to do that for the county. We'll leave it out. I'm going to try to get some information on our website. I know that it's being circulated, but a lot of times, people don't get this kind of information. And we're going to be part of it, and I'll just pass it, if you want to peruse it. I just wanted to let you know that we're being very, very proactive with our workers' comp. We're working on a ten-step plan. We're working on return-to-work programs. We're being very, very aggressive with this to try to get every percent here or there. One percent represents, you know, twenty-two thousand dollars to us now, each time we do it, based upon the projections for next year. So just as an update that we're doing that, and if you know people that are private employers or you talk to other public jurisdictions, you know, you may mention them, hey, have you gotten enrolled in this program? We may go even to steps as to send it out to the Community Alliance, and maybe they can notify the other political subdivisions that may not be aware of this issue. My last piece of information is, as the board knows, we've been actively working on the one-stop contract, and we haven't been able to fully complete our discussions out there. And I'd like the board to pass a resolution authorizing a one-month extension to the current contract while we finish discussing that contract out there, so that everybody feels comfortable in the process. That contract expires today, and in the spirit of cooperative effort and team play, while we are asking for certain concessions in that contract, I'd like to make sure that they understand that we still want to be partners with them. So if you would pass just a resolution authorizing the extension of the existing contract for thirty days, I would very appreciate it.
Also move.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Claire?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
And that concludes my remarks, except to remind you of the executive session. Thank you, Commissioners.
Did you need any action for that workers' comp application?
No, it's just that we're going to be, there's certain meetings you have to attend and certain things you have to do. They're all administrative functions, but I think it's important for the board and the public to know that we are working very, very diligently. And, you know, Joette has just done a fantastic job for us across the hall with our liability issues and staying on top of them. This is one of those quiet areas of work that really goes on heralded, and you don't get a lot of play in it, but the money that can be saved is very, very large, and I want the board to know that we don't take any of that responsibility for granted just because it's not our money. It's important to us.
Thank you.
I see Mr. Caleb reading that with quite a bit of interest.
Four percent's forty percent.
Thanks again, Commissioners.
Okay, Mr. Ennis?
I have two issues. First of all, I have a matter pending litigation that I need a short executive session on. Secondly, I would like to join in the congratulations to John Roca C. I started working with the county in nineteen ninety-two, which was in the middle of those difficult years that Commissioner Blair referenced. You know, as a lawyer, everybody expects that you're going to instantly know everything. And I want to admit that, you know, the Budget Department issues truly are complex, and I didn't have a clue what some of those things were about. And I went to John, and he spent hours and hours patiently explaining these things to me. I can't say he made them simple, but he made them understandable. And I know it was during a period of time that he just didn't have time to spend on it, and so I greatly appreciate his help. And there were a group of people who, including Commissioner Blair, who stuck it out through those, that period of time, and it worked through the years to take the county to its current excellent bond rating. And that has, I don't know if the taxpayers understand the millions and millions and millions of dollars that has saved this county, and John Roca C. is an integral part of that. I think I can speak for all of the prosecutors, and I don't have to tell John what high-esteem Greg White has always had for him, but all four of our prosecutors that have worked with him are deeply indebted to his cooperation and assistance to our department. He has always worked well with us. And lastly, John, if you need help carrying that chair on your trips to New York and San Francisco, California, just give me a call.
Thank you, Jerry.
Commissioners report?
Commissioner Laurie?
Well, this was a very long week, starting with the Lorraine International Parade on Sunday. I think it was probably a record setter, a couple hours long. We did pass out candy. I think I owe somebody. Was it, who paid for the candy?
Dan Gilman.
Dan, well, I'd rather owe it to him than cheat him out of it. We also had Frisbees promoting our dog kennel, and those were a big hit. Tuesday, pardon me?
More ways than one.
Yeah, a big hit, yeah. A lot of people got hit by the Frisbees. Tuesday, Commissioner Blair and I went with the Soil and Water and visited a lot of the ditches that they've done and are preparing to do. We visited a dairy farm, was it Dovin?
Dovin.
Dovin Dairy Farm, and just how they're trying to conserve on water, or pollution going into our streams and things. It was very educational. And then yesterday, like I said earlier, we visited the dog kennel and did a video to promote our animals there. And I just want to commend the Maintenance Department. It's been so hot this week, and they've been out there, and they've done a wonderful job cleaning it up, mulching around the trees, and they did a really good job, so I just want to give them some kudos for that.
My turn.
Your turn.
Thanks. Has been a long week, a lot of things going on. Like to thank the Urban League for dinner the other night at the Lucas. They had their annual dinner with what they call their Oscars, Social Services, and people who contribute. Congratulate Greg Flucker for being Businessman of the Year in Lorraine County. It was a very nice event they put on, looking forward to it next year. We had the International Festival again, which was a very hot weekend, a great turnout for Lorraine. Commissioner Blair and I had the opportunity to do a meet and greet with the Johnson and Wales Chairman of the Board at the Culinary School, who is interested in coming to the city of Lorraine with Lorraine County Community College, and hopefully taking a portion of the St. Joe's facility that our administrator is Chairman of the Board of this year, and bringing a hundred and forty students into downtown Lorraine, approximately a thirty-million-dollar investment with rehab. We also had a couple other issues. We had the Quarry's project, and I'd like to thank Ron Twining. I was there last evening, got a chance to meet Mr. Pike. He seems like he's going to exercise his option, and Quarry's project is going to become a reality. He was very thorough. He answered a lot of questions. It was extremely hot. I didn't have to stay around as long as Mr. Twining did, which I'm thankful for. Also received some issues we got out there, though, if I can talk to Mr. Cordez. I got a phone call from Mayor Smith in Avon the other day, and there was a proposal from a developer to the city of Westlake to shut down Avon Road, which is a direct connector from Avon into Westlake, and he's very concerned about it. I've been up and down that road because I do a lot of the housing developments, it's never my private business, and it's one of the major egresses, ingresses out there. I was hoping we could address that.
Commissioner, in fact, I went out there last night. I've been through the area, but I wasn't as familiar with the area, and I went up and down the roads out there, and I concur that this is not going to be a very good thing for the entire eastern side of our county over there in Avon. Mr. Twining is seeking out the files. We had an issue with this four years ago. We worked with NOAAAC on it. We're going back to look at the history. I appreciate you bringing it up. I was going the way to the meeting two weeks from now, and I was probably going to ask the board to pass a resolution indicating to NOAAAC and to Westlake that we're against the closure of that road and that we want to support Avon in keeping free and open access into Avon from Westlake. But I don't have all the facts and details yet, but we are working on it. Commissioner Blair, you were part of that a couple years ago, too.
Yeah, I just want to ask, Ron, didn't we, isn't the board, the previous board already on record in support of beating an opposition, too?
And I need to pull that file out, so we're working on it.
But I, you called me with a couple issues, some I can conclude right away, and I did go out there last night, and I will have something in the next two weeks, even if we just revisit the resolution with a new board and reaffirm our position on that to support our communities on the east side of Lorraine County.
Can we forward something to Mayor Smith that we are working on it, and in two weeks we hope to have a resolution? Because he was kind of, he was at the planning commission meeting the other day on it.
I'll call him this afternoon personally and have discussion with him.
Okay, great. Been meeting with Dennis Will, our county prosecutor, and speaking with Sheriff Stamitti and with George Corey, the chief prosecutor, on Lorraine County State Force, which is taken into effect now. There's been discussions as to where the funds are coming from to that. Have we come up where we're going to address that issue at for sure yet, Jim?
Commissioners, it's going to be my recommendation that we pay those bills from some funds that we've accumulated under the MEG levy for the prevention of, excuse me, for the law enforcement efforts to defeat drug abuse and drug activity in Lorraine County. Some of the funds we set aside for the future, possible the future use of a construction and use of a crime lab, that was a long-term plan that the board set a course on a couple years ago, but certainly we can use those funds for these issues. It's permissible under the language in the levy language. You have to be careful how you go about that. It's a permissible use. I would encourage you to use those funds right now. The hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars would be put to probably better use right now doing that than saving it for a future crime lab. We can always continue to save for a crime lab later on. I think we have a pressing problem right now, and I would suggest that we pay those bills from those funds right now, as they come in. It doesn't require any formal action of the board. I've spoken, Mr. Roca C., we have an account set up to pay those bills out of?
We have it ready to go now.
Yes, okay.
Once we think it's decided, we can go.
Okay, so, you know, we've set that in motion, and it should not present us with any problem, and that'll bring clarity to the issue where that payment's going to come. I know that you've been asked several times on that, and I'm sorry that I wasn't more purposeful and clear in where that was going to come from, but in the excitement of the moment of us participating with them and some of the, them wanting us not to say much about it until they, you know, they went and did their Bad Boys routine that weekend, put us in a very awkward position on how to handle this, a lot of their work is kept quiet so that they're not exposed before they make the moves they need to make to be successful. And, you know, had we done a lot of discussion on this, we probably would have played their hand before they were able to gain the advantage on the criminal element here in Lorraine County. So I'm sure the community is grateful for your support. I know I am. I live in the city of Lorraine, and I know it's going to make a difference there. And we should sit down and have discussion with those folks later in the summer about continued cooperative efforts in these areas.
That's what I was hoping, this explanation I sort of gave to Mr. Will, that with what they had coming as quickly as it came, that that was the best way to do it, and that we discussed it out here, and I want to make sure everybody heard where it was coming from, what we were doing, so that will keep the press happy also, Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Your turn. Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. When you're the last one on the totem pole, everybody's already talked about most everything. I think you failed to mention an award that you might have gotten from the Urban League.
No, I didn't win. I finished second to Mr. Flucker.
Well, but I think that that's number two, you try harder. You didn't even mention that. I think that's important.
Okay, glad you're ready.
Yes. Jim just handed me a rating sheet from Moody's Investor Service, so we've been to New York years ago. John got to go to New York. We went as a team initially, before Mr. Cordez arrived on the scene, and we got a Moody's upgrading. And as we've progressed along the line, we've gotten investment ratings from both Moody's and Fitch. We've got a double A from Fitch within the last couple of weeks, I think.
We've achieved two upgrades in the last three and a half years. That's great.
And this today, or, well, he's given it to me today. It was dated last week from Moody's. It's a capital A, small a, and a three, so it's, is this an upgrade over what we've had?
No, Commissioner, it's, it stays the same.
It stays the same.
Given the economic climate in Lorraine County, our goal going into our refinancing of the bonds that you approved about two weeks ago was to maintain our rating. Sometimes you're in growth to get a better rating, sometimes you want to just maintain what you have. We felt that this time, after discussing it, and the only reason I really handed to you that quickly is because Mr. Ennis had talked about the bonds and the bond rating, and this is Mr. Roca C.'s last bond rating presentation that we'll do together. We've done, I would say, half a dozen of them together, and we've been to Manhattan twice together. It takes several hours working on conference calls and convincing these rating agencies of how good things are here in Lorraine County. And some of the questions they ask you off the cuff are amazing because they do keep up with what's going on in all the jurisdictions that they rate. And once again, I think some of the comments there were, you know, the stability of the budgeting process, the way the Commissioners have actively handled their budgets, their commitment to economic development, the growth that's going in the county. You'd be surprised, I'll give you all copied, just what they take into consideration when they rate us. They even talked about the Ford plant here and the consolidation of the Ford plants. You have to be prepared to talk about all those issues and give them factual information because they've already decided what's going on from their research. Now they want to hear how you're dealing with it, so if you give them a little bit too much smoke, they'll see through that pretty clear. But once again, as John does his last day with us, we just did this about a week and a half ago, and we were very successful at it, and I just wanted to point it out to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim and John. You mentioned economic development. I always want to piggyback on what Laurie had to say regarding our trip with the Soil and Water District Board. They showed us what they've done with the monies that the board has allocated to them with respect to ditch cleaning, but they threw in a little bit of economic development, too. And this is what makes Lorraine County so interesting, because we are both rural and urban. And to the north, we have all the urban stuff, and to the south, we have rural. And as Mr. Twining aptly pointed out on Tuesday, agriculture is our number-two economic development initiative in Lorraine County. And we got to visit two of the most exciting economic development initiatives that I've seen in a long time. Number one was Dovin Farms, as Laurie mentioned, and they're milking six hundred cows. They milk three times a day. They have three shifts. They work three shifts. You talk about factory working three shifts. They work three shifts at that dairy farm. And they, we view their silage bunkers and their waste management. They're putting in a new waste management next to the big concrete bunkers that they have for the silage, and it was fascinating to see it in operation. Then we went to the DBD Farms, which is a five-generation farm. Neil Braley met us there, and his father was there, Don, and they are a little smaller operation as far as animals are concerned, but they are into grain drying, and they have a new system, probably about five years old, and it is just fascinating to see how those, I don't know the right words to use for them, but they're bins.
The drying.
They dry the farm product there, and then they store it, and then, this was interesting, they can sell it when the price is right for them. They don't have to depend on somebody else. And that's, you know, that's all about being smart businessmen. And they treated us to pop there, so they knew we were thirsty. It was a hot day. But this was all put together by the Soil and Water Board, and over the years, we've come to have a good partnership with them. We give them a small amount of money, and they clean some ditches, and then they come back and tell us what they're doing. We also visited a ditch project in Lurie Township. A member of the Lurie School Board was there to, plus some other homeowners, to show us how much they appreciated what we've done in that particular area, so that was very, very interesting. And as both of my fellow Commissioners said, it's been a busy week. And we also visited Golden Acres, where they're going to send me pretty soon. I found a perfect swing there. It's really a nice setting. We hope the commercial will be eye-opening to some people of what a nice facility Golden Acres is for anybody in Lorraine County who needs it. Laurie, your line was, you remember your line?
Which one?
At Golden Acres, about, you know, when your family can't take care of you anymore. What did you say?
She forgot that.
Oh, it was so good.
She memorized it all yesterday.
She was so good yesterday.
All I remember is Betty trying to steal all the desserts off of the resident tables.
They did offer me some, and...
I'm assuming the field trip went well, then?
It was excellent.
Okay, great.
Okay, great.
And that nice vehicle that you assigned to us, except you need a step ladder for the backseat.
Which, which one, did you take the 15-passion van?
Yes.
Yeah, we took the big van.
The, you know, if it went that well, maybe sometime in the future we can sponsor a trip through the Community Alliance for other people around this county to see similar things. Sometimes the northern half of the county doesn't know what's going on, the southern half, the southern half doesn't know what's going on, the northern half.
Absolutely.
And maybe through the Community Alliance, we can facilitate some of this, and I'm sorry I didn't get to go with you. You know, I had to sit and represent you in some litigation anxiety.
Well, you know, everybody has to stand up and do their-
Seems like you had some fun, okay?
Yeah, we did without you, and I can't believe that we could do it without you.
Nor could I.
And, I, I, see.
I can.
And tonight, the Farm Bureau is going to have their annual Policy Development Committee meeting, to which we've all been invited, so that'll be interesting. And I saw Rebecca Gray hiding in the back, Lorraine County Community Alliance, which you just mentioned, so I would give Rebecca a chance to say hello.
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 Good morning, John. Happy retirement. You were an angel in my previous life, trying to explain some things to a girl who had a problem with her own checkbook, so I definitely appreciate that. Two things very quickly, Jim. I would love to get that information that you spoke of earlier regarding the workman's comp. I think that's an important issue, and we can get that out without a problem, both on our website, which is a segue to our, my next comment, and at our next meeting. I hope to have our website done very shortly in conjunction with Emerge Inc. It will offer an opportunity for communities in Lorraine County to speak interactively with one another in different forums about different things that are going on in the county, and hopefully be able to facilitate some more cooperative efforts, and that is in conjunction with Emerge Inc., and I'll make sure to let you know when we're up officially with that. Our next meeting is August the 3rd at the Black River Landing. It will be our second annual Black River Day, and hopefully we'll have some more great information about some progress that we've made in the Black River in the past couple of years. Not so sure that people know that we've had some major declassifications of things that were of, of great concern to environmentalists, so we're really making some segue.
Thank you, Rebecca. Nice report.
Thank you.
Okay, board correspondence?
Okay, well, actually, I just wanted to make an announcement that there will not be a board meeting next Thursday, July 7th.
No meeting next Thursday.
Okay. Any board correspondent?
I move the reading be waived.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Claire?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Any public comment for today?
Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and your comment.
Shirley R. Johnson Oberlin. Several meetings ago, I offered to pay for the infamous candy thrown around in Lorraine in an earlier, on an earlier occasion. The county payment for this candy was ruled as legal, and my money was sort of turned down. I did read in the paper that nine people had offered to pay the same bill. Did any pay? I don't want to be considered a deadbeat. This might be a good, this might be, however, a good way for you to get some small spending money if we all did pay up.
Thank you for your offer, Shirley. Mr. Cordez, can you respond to Shirley?
The matter has been completely resolved, and you are not a deadbeat. Your offer was generous, but we've resolved it, and we do appreciate your generosity in, in, in making that offer. Maybe when we visit some parades of functions in Oberlin, you'll be kind enough to donate some candy for, for the parade, and we would appreciate that.
I think you need to tell her how it is resolved.
It was resolved because it was paid for.
But not by the innocent people.
No, no.
Thank you.
And to reiterate what, what the commissioner said earlier, we have decided, given the controversy, whether it's agreeable, disagreeable, legal or not legal, we'll just take care of those issues ourselves from now on, and we would have before had we known it was going to be such a big deal. So anything that we have in the future, we've taken care of ourselves, and I, and I believe you're right, you may owe, I know Mr. Kayla was in the pool, and I think Commissioner Blair, you, you brought stuff there with you.
No, I gave Dan the check.
Okay, so, and the week before, you and I partnered on what was up in the duct tape parade, so, hey, it's for the good of the community, it's for the kids, God bless them, and I don't mind being part of that pool. Thanks again, Shirley.
Thank you, Shirley. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Thomas Carl Hurley, historian and preservation specialist with the newly-formed Sheffield Village Historical Society. 190 years ago this month, in June of 1815, Sheffield Township was settled. Nine years later, in front of a group like this, Sheffield Township was organized. It was the first official act of the Board of, the newly-formed Board of Commissioners of Lorraine County, and it was covered 26 square miles, which today is Sheffield Village, Sheffield Lake, the present age Township, South and East Lorraine. I'm here to seek your assistance in passing a resolution to name a structure in Sheffield. It is the 254, the route, the Ohio Route 254 Bridge that spans the Black River, which connects Sheffield Village with Sheffield Township. It's been unofficially known for many years as the Garfield Bridge, after the Garfield family who settled the land just east of the river in 1815, and who is a fourth cousin to the president, Garfield. When they built the new bridge, it's still called, it's called the Route 254 Bridge, but it's been known through the community as the Garfield Bridge. We'd like to have it officially named that and a plaque there to honor this historic family, which one of their descendants recently brought the Milton Garfield House back into the family and restored it, Dr. Charles Herdendorf. And I'd like to also invite the Lorraine County community to an open house this weekend, Saturday, June, July 2nd, at the Historic Borough Homestead, which was built in 1820, and which is the oldest brick structure in all of Lorraine County. It's located at 2792 East River Road, Sheffield Village, Ohio, and I'll be one of the tour guides, and will give you a very informative tour of the Historic Borough Homestead and the family which shaped Lorraine County. Thank you.
Before you sit down, what is the time for the open house?
Oops, sorry about that. My throat's bothering me today. It's from 1:00 to 3:00 P.M.
Thank you. I'm not sure if the Board of Commissioners has the authority to name a bridge on a state route, but we can certainly ask. Mr. Cordez, you have comments?
No, I'll take that for action for you. I'll get your information, Commissioners.
Okay, so we'll follow up and see what our authority is, and if we don't, we probably don't, but we could also recommend. Do you have some written material that you could give to us?
I could send you some, Mrs. Blair.
Would you do that?
Generally, I do my presentations the way I'm doing today, because sometimes if I write something down, I miss something on it.
Well, and I appreciate that. I've talked to you before, and I, I always find your history interesting, but I think we need a little something to, you need something to-
Take care.
Okay. Mr. Cordez will work on it with you, okay?
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. If you have questions, I'm sorry.
I have one question, Commissioner. Do you know if Commissioner Blair was here for that first action?
Very much. Wow.
You've just been here so long, Commissioner, with all your experience.
No, no, thank you very much, but not in, no, I'm speechless, I can't imagine why. David, save me.
I feel like I'm saving Commissioner Kayla from the executive session.
Somebody needs to, thank you.
Keep us out here, David. David Ashenhurst Oberlin, I've got five small things. The first is just to say, I know Shelley said the crystal ball had not, has not been retired, but she didn't seem to object to the retirement of the phrase, "This is complicated, but I'm going to make it simple." So I'll be interested to hear what we get as the new phrase, if that one's not going to be used, but seems to me that's, that's a pretty good one, too, and John, we'll see you down on Tappan Square, so.
All right.
Thank you for that. These are very small things. Today's agenda is not yet online, which is, is, I just bring it up because it usually is, and I hope it will get online, and then everybody will be able to see online that there's not a meeting next week and things like that as well.
Thank you. Teresa, if you noticed, has left her vacation yesterday.
Right.
Maybe, she cleaned her desk off and did all the minutes she may have.
I did send an email to Ernie Smith to make sure it was put on the site.
Oh, you did? Okay, so that's not our problem, then?
No, and, and as I say, I'm not doing it to pull anybody's-
Well, we need to know.
-chain, but, because I really appreciate that it is there, it's downloadable straight from it now, it's great, overall. Another small thing, on number 23, we noticed that the last phrase says that all other provisions under Resolution 0454 will remain in effect, yet it also says the contract expires today, and I just want to make sure that is a one-year contract expiring today, so that that increase in funds was just to cover something that's in the budget, but it's not a two-year contract that's going to keep going or something like that?
No, that, it's just an increase in the contract to be able to meet the commitments and needs of the transportation services. It does not perpetuate a continuation of the contract.
The other small thing, this is, these are just things to let you know we're listening and, and, and reading out there. I believe if there is a summary sheet on personnel items, that vote didn't happen.
No, we're going to do that after executive session.
Okay, so there, just wanted to make sure that that wasn't skipped for everything that wasn't going to be in the executive session. And the last thing is, this meeting is going to run short enough. I hope that I, if, if Hal has nothing else to put at the end of this, that maybe we could put Bob Kish as Uncle Sam back on, just to, these, these commissioners weren't around for Bob Kish's appearances before this microphone and before this board, but he often came dressed as Uncle Sam or wearing very patriotic ties, and it seems to me for the, for the Fourth of July, good wishes to everybody, that to, to find a little of that videotape of Bob Kish as Uncle Sam would be a good thing, and I'd just ask if, if that's possible that the Commissioners would allow that. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Elizabeth Ramex Oberlin. If it is not too detailed or otherwise not doable, I am interested in number 24, filing of federal grant applications in agreements with Federal Transit Administration. Is this dealing with the depot area? Is it railroad? Is it Lorraine County transit? Or, or just what are some of the grant applications applying to?
Those grant applications would be with the FTA for operations and maintenance costs. We capitalize our maintenance costs back into our operating costs, and we receive a couple million dollars from FTA to subsidize our transit, along with the generosity of the Board of Commissioners and Fairbox revenues raised. I've asked Mr. Ferguson just yesterday to prepare me a detailed list of revenue sources and how much money we're receiving in grants to Fairbox, and to give the board a public update of where we are, where transit and the revenue is coming in, and that would include those grants that we apply for, and that's what, what those are. And I'm going to present that information to the board sometime in the next three or four weeks to, to show how much transit is bringing to the community through grants and what the multiplier effect of those grants are in the community, so you'll have additional information at that time, too.
So it had to do with Lorraine County Transit, which I do use on occasion and very much appreciate, and I know other people do, too.
And just for the record, we're still working on the air conditioning, too, so I know there's been a problem on a few of the buses, but we're on top of that.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else wishes to address the board this morning? If not, I move that the Commissioners go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and our legal counsel.